Welcome all. We are in the Utah State Charter School Board meeting. It is June 8th and we are about 1:35 as we begin. We welcome folks with us, AAG Olson with us today, Deputy Superintendent Stallings with us today, our staff and board members. We, member Spiker will be here soon. And we know member Smith may join us electronically as we go along. And guests, thank you all for being with us today. So let's begin. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The flag of the United States of America. Public for which it stands, one nation under one individual.
And we are starting a little later today because we are going to connect to a baseball game in order to have an opportunity that provides a celebration, location and fun for a group of exceptional schools that we want to recognize. And that group will be with us at the baseball game. We get to go and mingle and have fun. So, thank you so much. And in advance, I have to slip out to teach a class, but we'll come back to baseball, of course. So I'll leave you to do the other little bit of business and Vice Chair Phillips will continue the meeting as we get to that place. Do we have any public comment today, Ms. Castillo? No, all right. So no public comment, we'll continue. To the Board Chair report, I'm going to skip past Mission Vision Values review today and go right to Board Chair report. Only two things that I, two things I want you to know in your packet of materials, thank you to our team for putting together, and it's mostly for me, but I included all of you because I lose track of days sometimes. And so just from the days that we voted on for our meeting schedule through the fiscal year 24, there's a list just to verify for yourselves what days we will be meeting here. And some of them are not our regular meeting dates, so take note of those as well because of meeting schedule of the State Board of Education relative to follow-up to legislature and a couple of those kinds of things. So note the dates. In some months, it's not our regular Thursday of the month. All right, that's a say to that. And also I'm going to recognize and hear with us to do a leadership from the, of our team that who, you know, I don't know how you're standing up still today. This team who the last couple of days, they have just created, not, they didn't create in the last couple of days, months ahead, they have created and worked on to produce two days of really tremendous opportunity for charter folks around the state. All educators around the state, actually, there are, and outside of the state even, some who came. And wonderful keynote speakers, the Utah Association of Public Charter Schools had a tremendous event which many of us were able to attend. And so we just want to take a minute to say thank you for that additional support and for that connection of schools. It's a wonderful time for others to make contact with each other and to know each other and network, but also to learn. There were some great breakout sessions I went to, others of you, I suspect, as well, and keynotes. And they also at the end, last night, end of the second day, two really full days of good work. They named some award recipients. So I thought it would be fun and I should have my phone on silent, especially when it says scam likely. So this is much more important to talk about, the award winner. So I, they kindly gave us a list. We can recognize some of the award recipients. So Nate Adams, who represents many schools as a business manager, was named Business Manager of the Year. Denise Mott from Ascent Academy in the Lehigh Campus was named Teacher of the Year. From Voyage Academy, the whole board of Voyage Academy was named Board of the Year. Good Foundations Academy was named School of the Year. Corey, and I hope I say his name right, but I have someone who can help me, Keiker. All right, Corey Keiker from Itineris was named Rookie of the Year. Tracy Nelson from Greenwood Charter School was named Administrator of the Year. I love that you also named Employee of the Year. So Employee of the Year Gloria Tapia from Dual Immersion Academy, so great. And two of our final legislators were named as Legislators of the Year, a Senator and a Representative, Senator Lincoln Fillmore and Representative Susan Pulsofer. So congratulations to all of them and thank you for that. So thank you all for that great work too. And I know it's, it takes a lot of time and work to put it together. And yet you both seem so calm when I saw you. So I'm sure there, it's like being a duck, right? I always say to my students too, when you're a school administrator, you're a duck because you have to look calm as you glide across the water, even though your feet underneath the water are doing this all the time, right? You're just, it's constant struggle, but you always have to appear calm and like everything's going so well. So congratulations to those folks. Thank you for that great conference and thank you for allowing us to recognize them to here. All right, we have, Jennifer is one I should have said. I so apologize as I get to Executive Director report. Jennifer asked to be excused also. And those who saw her earlier today know she's had some medical concerns as well. And she, and so she asked to be excused. And so we do excuse Jennifer today from our meeting. And so we don't have an Executive Director report, but we do have consent agenda. So meeting minutes, financial report and some changes to the Voyage Academy bylaws. And let, anyone wants to pull any of those and you may within a motion do that or I'd be happy to entertain a motion relative to the consent calendar. Welcome, perfect timing, Stephanie.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar for May? Or just the consent calendar? The consent calendar?
Thank you.
I'll second that.
June consent calendar though involves things from May, right? So a motion from Member Cisneros, second from Member Olson. Any discussion about that agenda? All right, all those in favor, say aye. All right, I'm seeing a unanimous vote, that motion passes. We do have need, and it's a little sooner than, than noted on our calendar, but that will help us to get back in and continue our agenda after. We do have need to go into a closed session and I appreciate you doing it early in the meeting so I can be a part of it so before I have to step away this afternoon. So we do have a need to go into closed session. May I have a motion relative to that? And then we'll take a roll call vote.
I move to go into closed session so we can discuss character incompetence on individuals.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, so motion from Member Basset, second from Member Olson and roll call vote to do that. So Member Spiker?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Phillips?
Yes.
Member Basset?
Yes.
And Member Cisneros?
Yes.
All right, unanimously, we will move into a closed session. We shouldn't be a long time and we'll invite you right back in. And I think folks are here for the next agenda item. So we can, we may be even a little ahead of schedule, but we'll be ready to do that. So we'll excuse you all for a minute. We're going to stay right here, yeah. And we'll just wait for Joanne to signal us that everything is set as we need. And we're even going to excuse staff, I think, today, right? We'll excuse staff as well. Thank you though, sometimes that, we won't do that and we'll make up to you by coming to meet with you a little bit later. Thanks. All right, we are back in open session. This Utah State Charter School Board, June 8th, about 2:53. Thanks for those who you held on and waited for a bit for us to get started. Our next item is a probation status report from Dr. Evans relative to Vanguard.
Chair, I noticed these lights are still red. I don't know if that matters.
I think that's okay because that, actually it picks up all of the room atmosphere, everything everyone says in the back and here. Thank you for pointing out, but I think that we're okay. And Ms. Castillo said yes, and that's why I always look to our, thanks.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I get to give an update on Vanguard Academy's probation status. I'm going to just give a, kind of a summary of some of the actions that have happened over the last couple of months since we spoke about them in March. In April, I was asked to step in and do some progress monitoring and, and just see how things were going on that front. I'll start here. So the first deficiency was regarding the conflicts of interest and the procurement issues at the school. The primary focus of this was that the board members had sufficient conflicts of interest that it really made it impossible for governance, hiring, management, all of those other things, procurement to happen according to the way that the law, you know, really expects it. And this really stemmed from the conflicts of interest, but the, grew into covering the procurement issues. So since March particularly, they have, well, this, here are all of the actions the LEA has taken over the last year. I really have focused on the ones in the last three months, but they've changed their LEA leadership. Charles Reynolds is now the Director of the School. They've worked on updating their bylaws with conflict of interest language. This is something that I'm actually working with AAG Olson on. The school sent us some, a draft of those bylaws. AAG Olson and I reviewed them, added in some comments and sent them back to the school. We're working on that and we should have, because of our process, it just, there wasn't time to get it done before this meeting. So it'll come before the board in the August meeting. The Vanguard Board has also replaced several of their board members and put people on the board from outside of the community. They've also implemented a procurement committee. So this is a separate, separate committee, kind of like it's part of the board, but it is separate and has the authority to make financial decisions. And all of the people on that board or on that committee are, have non-conflict or conflict of interest statements all, you know, filed and everything like that. They've worked on rebidding some of the conflicted contracts to this point. They've also hired a procurement officer, if you remember Michael Clark, who used to be here on staff and then was the, asked to step in for a short period as a mentor. He was hired as the procurement officer, working with the school. And so he does all of the bidding and RFP processes there. They've also replaced their business manager. So they had an internal business manager. They've now contracted with Red Apple. Recently, we also had an auditor report. This was conducted by State Auditor Seth Overson. And he gave some suggestions in there. They've also worked on getting some training on how to do, to create like generalized rubrics for the procurement committee and how they're, they're working. So I really think that this, this one, based on the actions that the school has taken, we can mark this deficiency as resolved. The second deficiency from the probation letter was regarding the lack of documentation and internal controls. This one was marked as resolved in March by, by the SCSB. It was connected to the Child Nutrition Program and that, they took that over. So that, they've never forwarded anything to us. Let me, let me take a step back. In that letter in March, we said if the, if child nutrition opens up anything, we would mark this as unresolved. But as of right now, we're marking it as resolved. CNP has also never sent us any additional information that this is still an issue. So I'm going to go forward and just say that this, this deficiency remains resolved. Excuse me, it says deficiency two up there and I'm hoping it will change. There we go, oh, it jumped. Deficiency three was the Open and Public Meetings access. They have received training, several trainings since November of 2022 on how to conduct open and public meetings. And then since March, in particularly, all of their procurement committee meetings, all of the board meetings have all been noticed, agendaed and the minutes have all been correct and according to the Open and Public Meetings requirement. So I'm also marking this one as resolved. The deficiency four was regarding the material misrepresentations. This had to do with statements about their lottery, the purpose of the LEA, the target population of the school and then savings to taxpayers. This was, there were a number of statements on their website and so these statements have been removed and there's now been a corrected statement in there saying, you know, that the past statements were false. And so I'm marking this deficiency as resolved as well. And then deficiency five was for the lottery and enrollment practices. And there were concerns that the marketing and lottery practices were leading to a lack of diversity and perceived openness to the general public. I met with the school, Charles Grace and I, we met earlier in March and went over their enrollment at the time. Some things that they've done to improve their enrollment practices. So they have an articulation agreement with Endeavor Hall, which is the school across the parking lot from them. They've also been advertising on social media. And then the thing that I've noticed is they, they are fully enrolled at this point and there are still two enrollment preference groups left that they are not able to get into the school at this point. So they've, it's children of board members and founding board members, siblings. And then the, the two that are remaining are children of teachers. So they have some children of teachers who they're not able to get in at this time. And then the students from the articulation agreement with Endeavor Hall. So they're fully enrolled at this point based on their, their priority enrollment groups. But they are holding open houses and, and trying to advertise out and building that, that waitlist. So I'm also marking this one as resolved. And that is the end of my progress monitoring for report. We do have some members of the school here. Charles and then several of the board members are here as well. And so if, I'll turn the time back over to Chair Bowles for any questions or anything.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Welcome folks from Vanguard. Thank you for working on this process with us as well. I'm hearing that those five deficiencies, I'm hearing some recommendation from staff, but board, you can, you need to make decisions as you choose. And do I, I'm not sure if anyone is ready at this point. Really your action could be a continuance to continue to monitor Vanguard. Your, your, could be to remove them from probation or to make a motion that you're not satisfied with the resolution of those deficiencies. Maybe there are other options. Those are the three I'm looking at potentially.
Sure.
Yeah.
Can I just ask?
Absolutely.
So Dr. Evans, I'm asking the obvious, I think. I just, I just want to confirm. So you've covered just a few deficiencies. Is it your position based on your involvement? Is it your assessment based on your involvement that there are no remaining outstanding unresolved deficiencies?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Anyone ready for a motion? If not, just will.
I just have another question from Dr. Evans.
Absolutely.
Dr. Evans, you mentioned that there was, the, that the bylaws will come to us in August that are, that need to be fully revised. But is it your opinion that those are well on their way and you don't have any concerns?
Yes, yeah. So the, the first draft that the school sent me, I worked with AAG Olson. We, we added in a number of other paragraphs talking about how the conflicts of interest would be handled, how the procurement committee would work. We've sent that to the school. The school really liked it. It just wasn't, within the timeframe, it wasn't able to get it before this meeting or before the authorizing committee before it came before the full board. So that's kind of why.
Yeah, maybe follow up even with AAG Olson. If he, as he read those, saw any concerns in those, those bylaw revisions as well.
I haven't had direct contact with the school, so I don't really have an opinion that way, just working with Dr. Evans. And as far as I can tell, there's cooperation and, but I don't really have any knowledge.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Evans, as you've looked at the efforts of the school to comply with some of these creative ways that they devised to resolve particularly the conflicts of interest related to finances and procurement and, and so on, because we had concerns that those went into the administration as well. You've addressed that. Are there areas that you feel that are worrisome, glaring areas of concern given the efforts that have been put in systematically here? I know some of them have even been placed into the charter itself, which is in agreement with us as, and therefore would, would not be able to be changed except for in an agreement with us. The bylaws would be put on consent and therefore become an agreement with us as well. So it's bilateral. Do you, are, are there areas of concern that you feel have not been addressed by not only the systems, but also the way that these systems have been utilized in the last few months that they've been in play?
No, I, I think the, you know, speaking particularly of the procurement committee, for example, like it's, it's meeting regularly, it's, the way it's interacting, not only in terms of how it conducts its own open and public meetings, but in the way that it's working with Michael Clark, with Red Apple. I, I really don't have any concerns.
Another thing? I noticed in your resolution of deficiencies and it, it literally could have been when I put my glasses on or off and couldn't see them. So forgive me, but one of the things that I, just helped me to sleep at night in terms of some of the resolution of these deficiencies was the school's agreement to utilize whenever possible, whenever reasonable, the, the vendors listed on the state, that the state has already approved as procured as vendors for state purchases. Have you seen that also in play as you've watched the school proceed with its purchases or planning for next year and that sort of thing?
Yeah, we, we did see that when, in the last, or the procurement committee meeting that I attended last time, they did talk about that as well. So yeah, I have seen that.
Sorry, again, perhaps asking the obvious, but Dr. Evans, in light of what you presented today, do you have a recommendation for the board for our action today?
Yeah, I'd recommend that we take them off of probation at this time. With, with the deficiencies resolved the way they are, I don't, I don't see, I'd recommend that we take them off of probation. I would, yeah.
Vice Chair Phillips?
Thank you, Dr. Evans. I'd like to move that Vanguard Academy be taken off probation by this board.
And Member Basset?
I will second that motion.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Chair Phillips and a second by Member Basset. Any discussion to that motion? Yes, please.
Just for the record, I'll be abstaining from voting.
Thank you, thank you. You'll have quorum then if I vote in that as well. Yeah, yeah, we have four. Yeah. All right, any, any further discussion? All right, then are we ready for a vote? All those in favor of the motion, which is to remove Vanguard Academy off of probation, to remove the probationary status from Vanguard Academy, say aye? Any opposed, say no. Thank you. Now I can hear better, I'm not hearing. That motion passes unanimously then, thank you. Vanguard, we thank you for working through this process. It's an important process to follow and you've been removed from that probationary status. We, we have, in that close relationship, felt, started to develop relationship at, you know, as we watch each school, know that that continues in the future. So we wish you the very best and will continue to, to look forward to those bylaws and continue this process. So thank you so much. All right, thank you. I am going to now turn the time, the remaining items over to Vice Chair Phillips as I have to slip away and I'll meet you all back to a ballgame, which we'll all hear more from Dr. Evans about how that process will work. And I know you may have to look at the time because it, we guessed how much time each thing would take and some of the schools may not be here, of course, as we go along. All right, thank you all.
Thank you. And I, I'm not sure, Ms. Stephenson, would you remind me, are the schools appearing today? Are you simply going to, as staff, give us the recommended amendment request and explain those?
Thank you, Vice Chair Phillips. Yes, each school has been invited and I do believe we have a group from Hawthorne that is planning to be here. I can, I'm, I was curious if that was them out in the hallway? I can go check real quick.
We can give them a few minutes if they're not here and they were planning to be here. I hate to, to go ahead on that without their, especially since it's five minutes. Okay, why don't we take just a short five-minute recess? I'm not sure everyone had a chance to go to the restroom and get a drink, grab a snack and we'll reconvene at 3:15 and have Hawthorne present and have Ms. Stephenson give us our, her recommendation and presentation. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. And as we begin the next part of our meeting, we have some amendment requests and similar actions that are being requested by schools. And so at this time, I would ask Marie Stephenson, who is our school support coordinator, to discuss the amendment request from Hawthorne Academy. And would you like Hawthorne Academy representatives to come and sit? Or is that something that if, if it's just needed, you'd like to have happen?
Yeah, that would be great to have them.
Okay, let's invite Hawthorne representatives up. Maybe they could introduce themselves. Remembering that you have to push the little red button that says speak. Well, it's a black button, but it turns red when you push it.
Go ahead and start Floyd Stensrud, Superintendent Hawthorne Academy.
Oh, there you go, yep.
It was green, it was red, okay. I'm Joy Lovett from Hawthorne Academy. I'm the IB Coordinator and STEM Coordinator.
Jennifer McKissick, Parent Representative.
Amy Tatin, Board Member.
Megan Pettit, Board Member.
Courtney Garcia, Curriculum and Assessment Director.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair Phillips. So Hawthorne Academy has come today and they are asking for an amendment to change the model of their school. The context here is that Hawthorne Academy was authorized to run the International Baccalaureate Program. And this was the model that they chose back when their school was chartered in 2009. The school states that IB's original intent was to create inquiry and build character in the primary years, which they use in their K through five program, and to provide a transdisciplinary thematic approach to instruction. However, they have found that while that works well in their, in their K five, that they have not had that continuum as they got into their secondary level or their middle years program. So that has created a gap or a disconnect in the continuity of their program's implementation as students have moved from elementary to middle school because Hawthorne Academy is a K through nine school. Hawthorne Academy believes that because IB does not create a targeted instructional approach at their school, that rather than just being transdisciplinary thematic units, that the IB has no longer proven to be a useful tool to help students with their academic success at their school. As they have engaged with their stakeholders and their community, the board and leadership of the school believes that STEM would help them to create the same methodology that they're getting through those units, but without the focus on specialized themes and. themes and planners and separate curriculum mapping structures that are required by the IB and that have proven cumbersome for teachers. And so the shift to science, technology, engineering, and math, or the STEM focus for all grade levels, would allow a full integration with a singular curricular emphasis, and it would allow the school to better align with state standards, providing for targeted instruction in the areas of science, math, literacy, and prioritize academic achievement with well-rounded, research-based approaches to student learning that are more inclusive and productive. And so Hawthorne Academy is here today to answer any questions you might have. In your action summaries, we have presented two possible motions that you may want to consider. The first one would be to approve Hawthorne Academy's request to change its model from IB to STEM. The reason that we would, as staff, give this as a possible motion would be that the school has shown there is a disconnect within their school, within the IB program, and that the STEM emphasis will allow that greater continuity for their students and teachers. Staff, as we have worked with the school, has also been impressed that the school has actively engaged with their stakeholders. When we did have a school that came a few months ago that was also talking about changes with the IB, if you remember, there had not been a lot of stakeholder engagement. And so this has been one where the board and the leadership and the community has been involved and has shared what the IB means to them and that they're open to exploring the STEM model or other models for their school. We did present another possible motion, just so that you are aware, with the IB, there is a middle years program, though it has not been implemented at the school. So if the board wanted to continue to authorize an IB-specific school, the board may want to consider encouraging Hawthorne Academy to look into that middle years program and instead run that full IB continuum of the PYP and the NYPD program and continue to be the IB school that was originally authorized. As staff, we would recommend the first, which is approving that change from IB to STEM, based on that stakeholder feedback and being able to be responsive to the community needs and the community requests. But of course, that decision rests with our board. And so I will turn that time back over to you, Vice Chair Phillips, for questions or anything else that I can answer for you.
Thank you. Thanks so much, Ms. Stephenson. And thank you Hawthorne representatives for being here today. Board members, do you have any questions of either Ms. Stephenson or the Hawthorne representatives who are here today? Member Olson?
Thanks, Vice Chair. And Hawthorne representatives, thanks for being with us today. We're sorry that this is kind of a slow process to get through to to get the final approval that you need. We've discussed this in our authorizing committee meetings, and and really, the only concern that I had in the course of those meetings was just making sure that this was something that your parents are generally, that is, your entire school community, your administration, your your teachers, your parents are all supportive of. That is what I saw, at least personally, is is the only real hurdle here. Can you just, I don't know that we need every little detail in this regard, but can you just give us a quick summary or overview of what you've done to to make sure that you've got complete support of, and I'm sure there may be some who are not supportive, that's always possible as well. But could you give us just a summary of how you've gone about ensuring that you've got support to make this change from your school community?
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and answer that. Thank you, first of all, for inviting us here and also for giving us the the opportunity to defend this position. So thank you, Mr. Olson, for for the question, too. What we what we actually did to convey that message to the community, we we actually surveyed our student body, our teachers, and our parents to gather data from each of those constituencies. And the parents, by and large, don't really understand, I think, what the what the concept of the IB philosophy is. There were parents who felt that it was something that they did want to continue at Hawthorne, but the majority of them felt that that either they did not care that we made that shift to a STEM focus, or they had no interest at all in the IB program whatsoever because of that lack of understanding, really, of what it meant or what it was. And so I think what was more important to the parents is that the academic focus that we had targeted instruction, that the academic emphasis toward improvement for them was key and critical. And so as we take a look at where the state is really headed in relation to that, we felt that in relation to standards-based approach and more targeted instructional approach, and rather than really having these two divergent pathways, which is currently what Hawthorne is on, we have we have one pathway that is the IB, and Maria is well aware of this, too, and I appreciate Maria actually being here today. So we have the one IB pathway, and then we have the standards-based instructional targeted approach. And it's kind of like Robert Frost and his poem where we have, we're in the forest, and we want to go down one pathway, we may want to go down the other, but we haven't really started down either pathway because it's difficult to make that determination as to which way we go. The the issue is right now that Hawthorne is a targeted school improvement district. And so with that in mind, we're working with Dr. James Martin tomorrow also with the call data and a way to look at assessing where we are and how we actually make improvements for our students at Hawthorne. And we felt that the only way to do that is to have a targeted, focused approach. And if we are on two different pathways that are diverging, it's like oil and water. We're not able to make that mixture work. It's like shoehorning something into the standards-based model that the state espouses and really not melding that that aspect of the curriculum into the state model, whereas the STEM approach offers that integrated approach, a model already into each area of the curriculum. So it would actually be a much easier way for us to say, if we're looking at an academic approach for students that is integrated into each area of the curriculum that is also a targeted, standards-based approach, STEM offers that pathway, whereas right now the IB would offer a thematic kind of, you know, we're talking about a square peg approach where we're trying to shoehorn that into the state model, and it's what we're after is academic progress for our kids, and that's what the parents want. That's what the parents are after, is that academic achievement piece, as well as the well-rounded piece for their students. So we feel that we can maintain that well-rounded piece for the kids, while at the same time maintaining that academic piece, which is key to their academic success and moving on to high school. We also feel that the STEM approach will offer a 21st century approach, which is in line with the state, whereas the IB approach also sends us on another pathway. And it's like any good business model. If we're trying to accomplish what a good business success model would be, it's one that's focused and one that is aligned with a good business targeted for us would be what we would call a targeted instructional approach, and that's really what we're after. And so we're hoping that that standards-based model with the STEM curricular emphasis would help us accomplish that. And we know that the parents will will support that, because their feeling is that it's more important for them to be, their kids to be academically successful than to have teachers and students who have a confused, mixed feeling about where we are and what we're really about, and we want to be on one pathway for that academic success, to get out of TSI and to be highly a highly successful school with a highly successful model.
I I appreciate your explanation of why you're making this change, and and maybe I just wasn't clear in my question. My my question is is something different. It's just simply explaining what you've done to gather support from your school community, students, parents, faculty. You mentioned that that you did a survey of some kind, but you haven't, I I was hoping you could tell us some more about that, what exactly you did and how the survey respondents came through.
So in the in the argument that I shared with the with the board, we did put a survey out to students, asking them various questions about what the impact of the IB program has had for them and also to parents. And the IB program has had minimal impact on them as students and minimal impact on them as parents. And so as far as their concern for the IB program is, they don't, they don't really have a concern about us making a shift. So as far as how we actually gathered that data, I've talked to several parents myself personally. I think that the principals have probably talked to parents. We've also talked to our board members in in several meetings in terms of asking them how they have felt as parents and as board members. I don't believe that our board members would make a shift toward saying that an alternative approach would be okay if they didn't feel that they had community support for this type of shift. So the parents that I've talked to personally feel that the IB is is not well-understood, that they do understand a science, technology, engineering, math approach. They also feel that the integration of that approach into each area of the curriculum is something that they get. And so they also feel that that's a more targeted approach for their for the success of their kids. Students, when it comes to them understanding what IB is, it comes down to receiving an award. So if if an award is important to the student, an external motivator for them to obtain something at the end of this, it isn't about academic achievement, it's about receiving a certificate. So I want to shift that gear toward literacy. I want them to think about what their academic learning is actually about. Is it about learning? Is it about the shift to higher academic achievement, well-being in that regard, so that they feel capable and competent in the area of academics, and especially as they're making the transition to high school? What does that look like for them? If we're stuck in a thematic approach, then their their readiness for high school will be much less than if their academic achievement is something that they're actually prepared for. So as far as the parents, we've communicated that with them in terms of verbal communication, in terms of a survey that went out to them with in relation to the students. We had, we had a high percentage of students, actually, who took the survey and felt that they really didn't understand where it where it was going, and and it had minimal impact on them. As far as teachers, if you don't mind me going there for a minute, Mr. Olson, they felt that they were confused about the direction that Hawthorne was going, because are we on this path or are we on this path? Which direction are we actually headed? And so this doesn't, this isn't, it's not healthy for Hawthorne Academy to have the perception that we're on two different pathways. And I don't think that's healthy for parents either, to perceive that we're on two different pathways.
I can speak to the parents.
Does your community support the change? That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. And you you've explained that they think where you've been is maybe ambiguous. I just need you to answer that question.
Mr. Olson, my name is Jeremy Craig. I'm the principal at one of the the schools. I can speak directly to the parent survey that we that we talked about or that we shared. So, oh, gosh, it was probably about, what, four months ago that we sent out the survey to our our parents and and families. We had 234 responses, which actually was quite well, are quite well participated in. We had a number of questions that we asked that that Dr. Stensrud was referring to. We wanted to know from parents how familiar they were with the International Baccalaureate Program. The vast majority of them indicated that they were not very familiar with it. Some of them actually indicated that they were not familiar with it at all. And then we asked for, what is your opinion of the IB program in relation to its value at Hawthorne Academy? And we had 197, 179 responses directly to that, most of those responses indicating that they felt that it was a beneficial program, but that it wasn't the only route to go, and that the vast majority of them either didn't understand it or felt that that was not the not integral integral to the to the development of Hawthorne Academy. And that really kind of was where a lot of the 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 direction for the support with STEM was coming into play. The other questions that we talked or that we asked our parents, do you feel that IB is an essential program to the success of Hawthorne Academy? Forty-two percent said that it was a good program, but it was not essential. Twenty-nine percent of those surveyed said, I can take it or leave it. And another 12.3% said that I don't find a lot of value in IB. Only 16% of our our parents surveyed said, yes, it's absolutely essential. So it was it was through that survey, through the parent survey, through through our students' student and faculty surveys, that we identified that that we're we're proud of the legacy that we have with with our International Baccalaureate Program. We do feel like the parents are supportive of the of the spirit of IB in terms of inquiry-based instruction, discovery, learning. These are aspects that that we feel are essential to to an effective STEM program as well. So based on that survey data, we we felt that this that the a shift to a STEM-focused school has the ability to build on the foundation that we that we established with that IB program. Does that does that help to answer your question a little bit on that survey?
But has there been a, has there been a request or a survey of stakeholders about this particular change that is going to STEM as opposed to the IB? I mean, you've you've explained that, you've explained some of the, I guess, the community feelings about being willing to to change from the IB program, and that's really helpful. Has there has there been any survey of stakeholders about this particular change that is a change to a STEM-based program?
We haven't, we have not done a specific survey to that. We were, we were hoping that unless you Yeah, go ahead.
There is a question that says, would you object to Hawthorne Academy moving to a new curricular emphasis STEM? And 76.5 said they would not object to it. So it shows a majority.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thanks for answering that.
And I apologize. I thank you very much, Amy. I did make reference to it, but I was making reference to it verbally, Mr. Olson. But yeah, thank you for that, Amy.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that information. Board members, do you have other questions? Yes, Members Sisneri?
First, I really appreciate the representation from various stakeholders of the board and the administration. Shows that that leadership at all levels is involved, and I appreciate that. I want to communicate to the school and to the board that I do believe that we do need to have a process that is not overly cumbersome for schools, especially older schools, to be able to say, we were approved under a particular mission, and that may or may not be what, you know, this many decades later makes sense. However, having said that, I have a few concerns, and that is, I was looking at your webpage, and I was looking at kind of some of the mission and vision wording that you have. And if you were to take IB out, you would literally become just another school, just your kids wear uniforms. The wording is very, very generic to any school. And yet, as a charter school, in our charter, we're supposed to be chartered for something different that a family doesn't already have access to. STEM has become very generic as well. And so I have a little concern of saying, let's remove the one thing that sets Hawthorne apart as a charter school. And then the survey results actually furthered my concern, because you have a large percentage of your families who know nothing, admit they know nothing about what you have been for decades. That says to me that there's a messaging issue, there's a fidelity issue, there's an implementation issue, something that at this point you should be knocking it out and be known for being an IB school. So if we say, please know, I do support you being able to So if we say, please know, I do support you being able to determine. The charter that makes sense for your community, but if we say, yeah, let's go ahead and take what makes Hawthorne Hawthorne off. Let's stick a somewhat generic methodology that on STEM. How do we say Hawthorne is going to represent STEM in a way that makes STEM meaningful? As opposed to we just do STEM?
So that's a, that is an excellent question. Uh, we are, we are going through right now for the first time uh in fourteen, fourteen years of our existence, strategic planning. And uh, we are, we are in the draft phase right now at the end of our strategic plan. And uh, we have three pillars with our plan, one is safety, one is engagement, and one is growth. So in relation to that student growth piece, I think that. Uh, the stra- that strategic plan has given us a focus that. That, and I, I have to, I have to say this in light of having, you know, board members here representing. Uh, the the Hawthorne community today. Uh, that is, that that I think has given us a focus and a and a and a shift in terms of where we are with. Our mission and our vision as far as what Hawthorne can become, uh, where we would like to be. And I am new coming in this year, and that that's not an excuse, I I understand where you're coming from there. Uh, the the former director has been here for for the fourteen years of of its existence. But uh, what I saw coming in was that lack of clarity. And I understand exactly what you're saying, if you, if you do take a look at the mission and the vision and our philosophy currently. Uh, there is a lack of connect between those, and so I felt that it was important to strategically plan for. Our future in the sense that, how do we bring those elements of purpose and direction together? To really give Hawthorne what it needs for a central focus. And that's where I felt that um, the fidelity issue was really in question. And as far as what we can accomplish with with the STEM model. We cannot accomplish with the IB model, and the reason for that is if you're trying to embed. The IB model today into something that the state is requiring of us, which is an academic achievement model with. You know, the standards based intentional curricular focus, then really what you're doing is shoehorning in something. That is a thematic approach and really kind of a square peg approach that IB is is really requiring of us. To embed in a system that is a standards based model that is like oil and water, the two just don't fit. And so if we, if we take the STEM approach and we're and we're taking the science, technology, engineering math. Um, and you take that approach into every area of the curriculum and you integrate it, you don't just say that today we're doing IB. So run off to this classroom and we will do IB here, or here are the terminal, here here are the terms. And I see that today you you referred to this term in your teacher teaching presentation for the evaluation, that is not IB. If you're saying or you're suggesting that we are going to have a class and over here today, it's time for STEM. Then you're not really doing STEM in your school, you're not integrating it as it should be integrated. That means that there needs to be professional development for the teachers in order to integrate that model into the school. So for example, if you're going to do observation or questioning, you take that seriously for the year. And you can, you can integrate that into each subject area for that year and build upon what that. That element of engagement looks like in the area of questioning and observation. You can do that in English with your novel or your text or whatever it is, you can do that in mathematics, you can do that in social studies. You can do that in art, so you can take that model with STEM and you can end actually integrate that into. Uh, any area of the curriculum, which by the way, the these. The uh, the Charter Board model is that we are to have a curricular emphasis. Not just some kind of model emphasis, but an actual curricular emphasis. So the area of STEM actually would provide that pathway for us forward, whereas right now. I feel that we don't have that pathway forward, but we need to create that, our strategic plan will help us with that.
Thank you, so um, with, and maybe you have not gotten far enough in the strategic plan, so if the answer is no, that's okay. Um, but what kinds of goals do you think that you would write as an organization? So that in fourteen years from now, if STEM has gone by the wayside or no longer fits with. Whatever standards, some new PhD person rolls out for us all, right? That are are you going to find yourself in a position where you? How much fidelity do you see being able to implement STEM, but what kind of goals do you anticipate being able to write? So that you don't have stakeholders saying, we know nothing about STEM in fourteen years? Cause I would assume the people who originally joined with Hawthorne, the people who originally wrote the charter, saw IB. Being so integral to the school and, and I realize those kids of, those families are out, I realize that, but um. Have you had a conversation around like goals and and longevity with this model and and how you would be able to demonstrate fidelity to STEM?
I think part of the issue that we've had is we've only, we we implemented. Uh, over time, the the IB model at the primary years only, grades one through, get grades K through five. So that means that grades K through or six through nine did not have really anything to latch on to. The STEM model can be promoted grades K through nine, which won't be, uh, which won't be difficult to integrate. If the PD has done correctly, the other thing that is um, I think important to the STEM model. Is that it also is based in twenty first century learning, so you get, you know, in addition to the. Four Cs, you can also work toward the state's model of the portrait of a graduate, which which then moves into college and career based learning. Which our goals are driven toward that, we actually just completed a grant for college and career based learning. So those things I believe are already in place as far as writing those goals to help us achieve what we need to do. To integrate this model fully at all levels of Hawthorne Academy. So we're moving in that direction right now, as I said, our strategic plan is in the draft phase. We will continue to integrate that through the course of next year. And make sure that that becomes fully integrated with professional development as we're, as we're moving forward.
Can can I just speak in real quickly?
Sorry, Megan.
Um, so I'm Megan Pettit, and so I've been on the board since its inception, so even writing the charter. Amy Tatten wasn't actually on the board when the charter was written, but has been since day one, she's also a board member. Heidi Scott is our board chair right now, um, and she also was on the board when we wrote the charter. Um, so to say that we want to change from an IB per school. Um, that's a pretty risky thing for us who really did love that program. Um, it wasn't something that we would have come up to you and said, hey, let's change, because that was a hard sell for us. Um, Jamie Dickinson is also on the board still, she also started the charter with us. She also has a very strong tie to IB in regards to, we loved that program. It was really disheartening to see our results from our survey, like you had mentioned, that our parents don't understand what that was. And they don't, and our teachers are finding it as it's just another thing for them to have to do to follow that planner, to add that. So I would say that when we look forward to our next goals, when we look at STEM, it's going to be something that's going to be rigorous, which is something that was important to us. That we raise that bar for our students, cause no matter what bar it is at, what level it's at, they're going to raise to that wherever it is. And so we want to raise that bar for them, um, we're going to set goals that are going to be something that's going to be maybe difficult for them to achieve. But I think through, we've, we've now transitioned to maybe even a little bit different methodology of the way that we're teaching these students. Um, they've done training through the Ron Clark Academy to kind of see some different ideas of how we engage our students, and that's exciting for us, right? So I think that of a board to change a charter from our specific board and how engaged we were and how important it is. Because fourteen, fifteen years later, it was something that we've raised our kids through, as well as some that have aged out and are still within our board. Um, for us to be willing to change it, uh, is very something that's very important to us. And so when we say, hey, this is something we're going to change and we're going to set goals for, accountability is going to be super important to us, right? If we've gone this long and our parents and our teachers and our students are not bought into our program, what are we doing wrong? What are we going to change to find something that they are passionate about that will get us to that lo- that level that we want to be at? So those results coming in, were a little disheartening, I have to say, as a board member, being on the board for so long and seeing that they don't have that same buy in. We're looking for ways that we can gain that buy in and finding ways that we can get those students, those teachers, and a community that wants to see that growth happen. And so I I would say this, when we set goals, it's going to have to be lofty, you know, when we're a targeted assistance school, we want to make sure that we get out of that. And why, because we want to see their education increase, we want to see them succeed, um, their success in all areas, not only. Outside of our little community, but where they go in the future, so I just, I just want to just put that on the record that we are still, those board members are still here. Um, and so to make this change, it wasn't easy for us to come up with this idea. Or to have this, these results come to us and say, hey, this isn't working, what are we going to do to make it better? Um, I'm not huge on change, I hate change, it makes me uncomfortable, um, but this is something that we are passionate about and we're going to see it through, and we want to see that. We think that a STEM based school, we, we have a lot of flexibility in that in regards to what we can do with it, IB's been a little restrictive for us. Um, because of the certain parameters we had to keep within, and so it kind of limited us as to the way that we could teach. And so I think this gives us a little bit more flexibility in how we can get that information to them. But I would say that, and I can speak at least for Amy and and Heidi here, that being on the board and seeing that progress over the last fourteen years. It's important for us to see that those growth, that growth is happening, so, yeah.
You, board members, are there others, yes, please, member Spiker.
Thank you, uh, I appreciated the data too, or that those numbers are really helpful. That there was a, an official survey that was given to to really garner some substantial feedback. I also really appreciated the conversation about about STEM. And about, as I'm reviewing your website right now, I think that, um, while I also have heard the same. Feedback about the IB program being restrictive, um, being difficult for teachers to engage with. Um, and really thinking about how they're embedding that for all students, I think the majority of schools are STEM schools, right? You know, I, I think that's part of what we are doing, we are in a world where if your school is not from a STEM or a STEAM focus, you. There, there's other conversations that should be hap- that should be happening. I do agree that we don't want it to be a one shot wonder, or you're coming in and you just get it here, like it should be integrated throughout the curriculum. That's how we should all be teaching. Um, I just worry that STEM is really not innovative. I worry that STEM is not going to be what is going to continue to keep people or come to draw people into your program. I'm not necessarily sure if IB is either, I do think messaging is key, I'm on your website right now. And I'm, I clicked on the about tab about the IB program and it's a coming soon. There's absolutely no content there for me as a parent to become educated about IB if I wanted to be on the website, so. I think that it's this fine line between if parents, and I say this, I was a charter school director myself at a Montessori school. We'd have people coming in thinking, I was Quest Academy, right, a tech school, like, uh, no, if you want a Montessori. You should be knowing that you're coming to a school that's a Montessori focused school, otherwise you got a bajillion other schools that you can pick from. And I think that it's critical that we don't want parents to just be charter hopping or coming to Hawthorne because they, because they're just frustrated and they. They don't know where else to go, right, they are coming because they, they want the product, they want what you are delivering. We, they want what your school is saying that they are offering and that it's going to make kids better and. And again, I'm all with you, I think as I'm looking at your mission, I'm on your, um, on your page here, these are. I have to go back a bunch, but critical, like, uh, teaching the whole child, um, you know, wanting to, students to be engaged in their learning. I mean, again, these are all things that I think the majority of schools should be doing. I know Hawthorne Academy has an incredible reputation, right, you're um, a a longstanding school with a history, as you're saying. And commitment, I mean, you can see this right here, we just want to make sure that we, the decision that we help all of you make and that we support. Is going to continue to sustain the school in a time where I think families are really thinking deeply about where they are. Choosing to educate their child, and so, and and the why, the why behind that. Um, so I know I just threw out a lot of different things, but as if I'm even trying to educate myself as a new parent coming to an IB school. It's hard for me to even find the information on your website to educate myself about that process. Um, and then I guess it's one other thing to think about is if you're making that transition to STEM. The, and maybe you've thought about this too, and I'm, is how are teachers being supported with the training that they're going to receive? Is there a particular curriculum that you're going to adopt, and I agree, it's not, this isn't about the program or about the curriculum that you're purchasing. But for teachers to be able to pivot and make this transition and do it with fidelity and do it well. There has to be substantial training, um, to give them the tools and the curriculum support versus just a kind of. Really nearly out there, which I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, member Spiker, yes, please.
So I um, am a teacher, I've been at the school since the South Jordan campus has been open. Um, I taught fifth grade for the last seven years, and so I have been over the exhibition, which is taking the students. Through what the teachers are supposed to be going through, so I've had my hands deep, deep into the IB. I also have um, my STEM endorsement and I have um, been teaching science for the last. Um, five years in fifth grade and I've had my hands really deep in STEM. And a lot of training there, and so I, I'm really passionate about both, and I see how they are so similar. And how um, they both are trying to um, send this message of. Um, let the students dive deep and let the students figure out their own answers, and they have very. A lot of similarities, um, where my frustration lies as a teacher. Being able to understand both programs, um, is I see the the vocabulary and the. The lines of IB that become um, difficult to understand because it's an international program, right? So since it's international baccalaureate, it's used all over the world. And the, and the language that we are teaching with our teachers is not that international language. It is um, a language that, you know, the teachers in the state of Utah are using, or the language that teachers in the nation are using. And so when you go to search and you're trying to find something that is um, IB with IB language, you're not going to find it as easy. As if you are looking for language um, that, that Utah teachers or American teachers are using. I don't know if that um, comes across is what I'm trying to say, but um, there, there is this. This confusion and the teachers are having a hard time understanding IB, the parents are having a hard time understanding IB. The students are having a hard time understanding what IB is, because the language that IB is using. Is not the same language that everyone else is using, and so if we switch. We're going to hold on to this inquiry based, this um, this. Looking at the world and and integrating subjects and and solving problems, problem based. Um, and hold on to that, that we can with STEM. IB says transdisciplinary is problem based, STEM is problem based, so it's still holding on to that. Problem based language, but um, we're getting away from this confusion of what does that mean? What does transdisciplinary mean, what is, what is a transdisciplinary theme, how do I use that? We're getting away from some of those things that are making it confusing for the parents and the teachers and the students. And getting it so that we can have a more clear conversation of start with a problem. Let the kids investigate, try to figure out that problem, and um, what questions do you have, what observations do you make? They're very similar in how they work, but the language and what's happening is a little more clear.
Thank you so much, uh, board members, I was just going to mention that. Uh, we can give the school, I think, some advice and and sort of point out some areas where they might do better in the next fourteen years, which would be good. But what we want to consider is if their board has voted and desires this, if we feel that their community and stakeholders have been vetted. In uh, this, on this change and seem generally supportive, um, their administrators and teachers are generally supportive. Um, then it has typically been our process to allow this change to occur. Um, and if you so desire uh, to do so, I think we should look at maybe a motion. Um, and if you so desire, uh, to do so, I think we should look at maybe a motion to do that at this time. And then perhaps in that motion, you could even give a, give a, a little bit of advice and encouragement in a direction that you feel would, uh, would help the school. That would be fine. But, um, i- if you're inclined as a board, as, uh, Member Cisneros began, to allow for a board to change direction after 14 years, when they really understand a little bit more than they did when they were first authorized, what they're about and what they need in order to, uh, increase the growth and the, um, the, uh, the outcomes that they're hoping for their students, then, um, it has been our process typically to allow a school to do that. Uh, i- is there a motion at this time? Okay, please.
And I'm gonna take your advice and put a caveat in my motion. So, so I do want to make a motion that we approve Hawthorne Academy's request to change its model from IB to STEM with the condition that within an appropriate amount of time, they receive a STEM designation as a STEM school.
Let me just clarify, would that be from the STEM Action Center that you're thinking about?
Yes, cuz that's the, yeah, that's kind of a gold standard.
Okay, very good. Do I have a second?
I'll second that and support that.
So we have a motion by Member Cisneros, a second by Member Spiker. Is there a discussion to that motion? Member Olson.
Yeah, can, can you just explain, um, the significance of the designation? And is that something that STEM schools generally have to get so they can call themselves STEM schools? If you can just educate me on that a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
I think it's appropriate to be able to label yourself a STEM school, that you get the STEM Action Centers. They, there's four levels, um, that you can obtain. I think the important part of asking for that designation is it forces the school to do a systematic approach to STEM rollout and implementation. And then they have to prove it through an application. And then other STEM schools and the STEM Action Center read the application and say on a rubric, here's how well you're implementing the aspects of being able to say we're STEM. Because to say STEM, you really do have to show that in every content area, because we don't want kids who've been at IB and have had rich lang- rich, um, fine arts and music and different things. So all of a sudden have those things fall off or history fall off because now we just see STEM as somebody's, you know, playing on a computer, cuz that's not what it is. So instead it's how is somebody, it's almost like applying the engineering method to all the aspects of how somebody looks at it. I appreciated the teachers, because that solved a lot of questions in my mind about, well, what would happen if they just doubled down on IB? Right? I mean, wouldn't you solve a lot of new problems? But I do understand the, the language, we understand STEM language. But it would force professional development, it would force, um, a systematic approach. It would force the music teacher to also be thinking through STEM. It wouldn't be a, we're sending off to STEM class or we're doing a STEM project, right? It becomes how you do school top-down in a structured way. And then someone else gives you a s- seal of approval. But then also for marketing, for messaging, for all that other stuff. You get this big seal, you get a big banner, you're on the STEM Action Centers. Well, there's a lot of benefit from a external messaging as well. That's why I'm kind of asking for that.
I'm sorry to belabor this, but, uh, is that something that the school has considered? Have, have you explored this? Is this on your radar and something you're planning on anyway?
Um, if that's okay, if I answer that. Um, I have been to the STEM Action Center and sat through those reviews of other schools already. I talked with Kelly Yates, who's over it, um, yesterday. And she said she's gonna invite me again next year to make sure that I'm there, so I know what's going on. I initially this year started to work towards that STEM designation and I kind of backed away a little bit as we had a lot on our plate. And I thought that there was some, some things that we needed to kind of back up from that designation for just a second while we get it in the roots. And I want STEM in the roots of the teachers and in each lesson before I start checking off boxes. So, um, it is, um, i- it, it's right, you know, I've got the whole thing printed and on my desk and we're looking at it. Um, but I want to make sure before I start doing the paperwork, there's a lot of, um, writing that goes on with it and you have to collect a lot of evidence. Before I start doing that, I want to make sure that it's, um, really good evidence and that it's really happening at our school as opposed to, oh, that will count, that will count. If that makes sense.
And, and the pending motion suggests a timeframe in which to complete this. Uh, wha- what would you propose as a timeframe in which to be able to get this done?
So, um, I initially was hoping for next year, but like I said, there's a lot to it. And I want to make sure that we're doing it in ground roots. I mentioned to Kelly Yates that we were gonna take a step back from it. And she said that's perfectly fine to get your, you know, to get it to where your STEM school is where it needs to be. Um, I would say it would probably take, um, at least, you know, like next year or the year after. Um, I know that they can take evidence for two years in the past. And so, um, rather than me going back through my, um, you know, everybody look through your past, I want to start it from the ground up, if that makes sense.
Please, yes.
Just, Member Olson, part of my thought is if this was a new, which I get it's, it's slightly, it's materially different. Um, but if this was a new application, I would expect we would see something in their application. We're gonna be a STEM school and we're gonna get a, they would be saying to us, we're gonna get a gold designation within three years. Like, if we had a new school approaching us and it had anything less than that, I would be questioning them. So I think it's a fair ask to say A designation, one of the four. And, and, you know, if they do it in two, that's awesome. It is a lot of work. Um, but I think three is reasonable. I don't know that I want to put that in the motion. I would rather have staff work with them on, because I'm assuming they would be rewriting, doing an Exhibit A and rewriting it. And so then working that through the Exhibit A process.
It's, it's very possible too, that with this change, they would actually be fully amending their charter were, were we to approve this ch- this motion. Um, that they would not only amend, you, come back with a new Exhibit A, but actually amend much language that's in the original charter for our approval through the, uh, committee structure and then on the consent agenda, I'm imagining. So, well, do we have any more discussion to this motion, members? Yes, go ahead, Member Spiker.
I was just on the, uh, website here, um, for, and I, um, and I'm glad to hear, um, that you've gone through as a reviewer. I think that's critical and that will be part of this school's success. And they just outline a timeline. It's from last year, but I think that, I like the idea of a three-year ten, and I know we won't necessarily give that directive. But by looking at this, it looks like the intent to imply happens in the fall with then, um, the presentation to the Utah State Board of Education for Approval in April or May. So I think I really like that idea of using the opportunity to ground yourself, do what needs to be done on a, on a, um, on a charter level and then start really working with the teachers to get the evidence that you need to apply for that. Um, I, I like this a lot. And it supports the Action Center that's happening within the state, which then also propels Hawthorne to be an exemplar in the charter world as a STEM school potentially as well, which I think is fantastic.
Thank you, Member Spiker. Any more discussion to this motion? Then I would like to call for a vote. All in favor? And there are none opposed, so this motion carries. You are amended with a little bit of direction. So good luck. We're excited about this new phase of your charter school and we wish you the very best.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And also, Mr. Olson, I, I apologize that I didn't fully understand the, the question or where we were going, but I do appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to our next, uh, agenda item. We're a little behind, but that's all right. We had a robust discussion and I think that was helpful to us and helpful to the school. We have now a, an amendment request from Wallace Stegner Academy. And this amendment request, uh, i- is specific to an ask for a change in the high school campus location for which they were originally approved as they came, uh, with a, a, a kind of combination, I think, expansion and satellite request. And so we will ask Dr. Evans at this time, he is a school performance coordinator for the SC, SB, to give us, uh, a summary and perhaps a recommendation on, on this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Phillips. Um, yeah, so if you'll remember, just a few months ago, uh, 2023 feels like a long time, but it was really just a few months ago. Um, Wallace Stegner came before us in February and they were granted a satellite request to open a third campus. So they, they have two campuses that are both K8 and they wanted to open a K12 campus. So they were approved for all three. In the months that followed, they found that it's been really difficult for them to find the, the necessary space to fit a full K12 campus. However, next to one of their K8 campuses, there's some land that they could acquire that would make it possible for that campus to be their K8 campus, or, excuse me, to be the K12 campus and this new satellite to be just a K8. Um, so they have come before us today to talk about their, uh, their request, you can see in the document there. Um, we've, we've thought that this was kind of a bigger amendment than just, yes, go ahead, because it, it's changing the grade structure of one that we've already determined. So I believe we have some of the team here. Yep. Um, yep.
Please come up if you would. We would love to have you introduce yourselves. Or yourself. Yes. Thank you for being here. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for having me, guys. Um, essentially for a K12 campus, you need roughly eight to 10.
Sir Max, um, may I have your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, my name is Anthony Sudwigs. I'm the co-founder and co-director of Wallace Stegner Academy. Sorry, my whole staff's on vacation. We always take off the two weeks after the school year, so it's just me. Yes. So essentially, um, to build a K8 school, you need roughly eight to 10 acres of land because you need a bunch of extra spots for parking spaces, um, and the blueprints of the buildings. Generally, we build our K8 schools on five to six acres. Um, the thing that's a little bit unique about our school is we like to build our schools in kind of neighborhoods that are built out. We look for neighborhoods that don't have high-performing schools and don't have a lot of school choice. Um, for us right now, that area is current. It's very few charter schools there. There's a lot of underperforming district schools there, but there isn't 10 acres that someone wants to sell us for a reasonable price. There is five acres though. And so we had this idea, what if we just split it up? We put the ninth through 12th grades somewhere else in some land that we can actually afford. Um, like for instance, near our West Valley Campus, it's literally surrounded by all these fields out there, um, some of which are owned by Ivy Homes that have expressed interest in selling to us. Um, but essentially that's the ask, uh, can we separate our ninth through 12th grade to build that building on land that we can afford?
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Evans, did you have additional information?
No, just, uh, in the, in the packet, we recommend that this, the, the campus change be approved. Yeah, that's the, just based on the information that we've seen and, and in talking with the, working with the school on this.
Okay, thank you. Board members, do you have questions of either, uh, Wallace Stegner Academy or of Dr. Evans? Yes, go ahead.
I must be caffeine deprived or something, cuz I really just want to understand who I'm voting for. So you're gonna have three school numbers. Two will be K8s, one will be K12.
No, no, one will be ninth through 12th. So three K8s and then one ninth through 12th grade.
That actually is different from what we understood, I think.
Is that different?
So you're gonna have four school numbers.
Yes, yeah, if we bifurcate this, this new campus that you guys just approved for us, that would technically make it four schools. Really just trying to chop it up.
I don't, I don't know, I guess this is where I'm going, like, even if it's three, two K8s and one K12, really it's just a matter of making sure that school finance knows the grade range for each school number under the single LEA, correct? So they're not asking for the change in student serve. They're not asking for the number of students served. They're not asking for any actual material change to their charter. We're talking about how a school number is aligned for school finance purposes, right? Am I up in the night here?
And just where it is located, since we did approve a, a different configuration.
That's true. Does it, does it change the districts in which students would be predominantly coming from? Is there gonna be any impact to the local districts?
No, there should, there shouldn't be. We actually expect the vast majority of our high school kids to be from our K8s anyways.
Thank you. That was a helpful clarification, uh, and might change the way that we've written the motion here. Um, so just keep that in mind, board members, if you're inclined to make a motion. Are there other questions of, uh, Dr. Evans? Any discussion that you might want to have among, uh, yourselves? Or, uh, that you would want to direct to, uh, Wallace Stegner's representative here today about this, uh, request?
So three K8s and one nine 12.
That's right.
And the change is from uh, an originally authorized K through 12.
That's right.
Okay, there, okay. I think we're on the same page then, all right. Um, then do I have a motion? So let, let me just, let me just rephrase it to make sure. Uh, so what we would actually be approving is your request to amend the charter agreement to change the new satellite that we recently approved into a K8 and to allow for a ninth through 12 to be approved at a different location.
Yes.
To, let me put it another way, to approve the ninth through 12 segment of that new satellite to be at a new location.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, we're really just moving them to a different spot where we can find the land.
Dr. Evans, is that your understanding as well? Could you clarify, help us clarify this?
Um, I will admit that that wasn't my understanding to begin with. I, cuz we had two K8 campuses and then we had approved them for a K12. And so my understanding was that we were just turning one of the other ones into a K12. But this, this also makes sense now that it's been explained to me.
So now we have, instead of a K8, a K8 and a K12, we have a K8, a K8, a K8 and a nine 12.
Yeah, yeah, and the reason that, um, that Dr. Evans is a little confused, cuz I kind of explained it that way because our goal would be to buy the land next to our West Valley Campus. And so that would kind of turn that campus into a K12. Um, but I can't, I can't guarantee if I'll be able to buy that land for sure. So that's why I'm kind of saying.
And if you can't buy that land, you have some land that could serve as a nine through 12.
Yeah, we have, yes, we have a number of areas, um, kind of in between our West Valley Campus and the new K, the new satellite was just expanded, that we have like as options that we can start negotiating.
My question would be, before we, before I take any other members' comments, does this change? Does this, is this cha- is this enough of a change that it would be required to go through our satellite or expansion application? As opposed to, uh, even if that were expedited, as opposed to simply being an adjustment to what we've approved? That's what I don't know in terms of the administrative. Uh, I, I'm looking to staff to help me here because if we approved a K through 12 school, in essence, I mean, to Member Cisneros' point, we're not actually approving more students, more money. Um, and, and a lot of things stay the same. But on the other hand, we are now approving a fourth location. So I, I just want to make sure that we aren't, um, breaking our own administrative processes that have been approved by the USBE for it, by which we proceed, uh, to appropriately authorize, uh, individual, uh, satellites and expansions. So if it, while the staff is kind of helping us pin that down, Member Cisneros.
So the question I'm wondering, cuz I, I don't know if physical location, as long as it's not leaving the district in which we said, right? So you're in this district, do we care that you're on a different parcel and land three blocks away? What I'm wondering is where we would get into the problem by creating a fourth school number? But if we kept three school numbers, then we're just shifting where that nine to 12 lands on school number. That seems like an administrative, not a big deal. But if we actually are creating a fourth school number, then that could be a problem. But I don't think we necessarily need to create a fourth school number as long as they're close enough in proximity to that existing school number.
I would agree, but there is some ambiguity there, I think, uh, related to, uh, the, the, and I should, and, uh, to the cur- process that currently governs, uh, our, uh, approval of satellites and expansions and knowing especially that unfortunately we are also in between, literally in between to a, a new process being approved. I think it is just about to be approved by the USB and has been, if I recall, up on, uh, up, uh, for public comment for the last, uh, Vice Superintendent Stallings, would you enlighten us, as you always do, on so many things?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So yes, R two seven seven five five two actually took effect, the new version took effect on May 23rd. So the new version of the rule is in effect now.
But the old version was when we approved.
When you approved previously.
And is, Vice Superintendent Stallings, are you either able to give us some sort of nuanced understanding of both the old and the new and to what extent we can operate? And I think allow this request, I think we would like to. We understand the problem with acquiring land. We have approved for this number and for these grade configurations. I think typically, we would probably lean as a board, I'm not speaking for the board, but I think we would lean toward just, you know, giving an approval to this. But we also don't want to go awry of processes we've agreed to follow under the USBE's umbrella of approval of these processes.
So would you like me to try and respond to that? So the new version of the rule kind of describes and gives the authorizer, the state charter school board, a lot of latitude when it comes to small expansion requests. The interesting thing about this is it sounds like it's a new satellite, but it would include additional students or grades. But one of the things in order to stay within an expansion or or something that's small, it would not necessitate a significant renovation. Now, it doesn't talk about what happens when you approve one satellite, but then really you want two satellites because that's kind of the short summary of what I'm hearing is the permission was given for one satellite when really they wanted two. And so, I mean, at this point, you'd probably need to review the procedures for satellite. I think some may argue that under the new rule, getting that second satellite should be easier or quicker. You know, there, there are less procedures or it's not as prescriptive in the newer version of the rule than the version that the first satellite or this satellite was approved. But there are requirements in there. So I, you know what I mean, that you'd have to go through. So you might need to check and go through your process for approving satellites to then do the two instead of the one. I would want to check that if I were you with your counsel.
What is our time, Dr. Evans, what is our timeframe here? Because when is the hopeful goal for opening? Do we have time, for instance, because we don't have a board meeting in July, to consider kind of an amended request, this amended request is what I'm going to call it, in August and still more or less keep within our timelines? I think this is an unusual situation where we've granted a satellite that, and the plans of the school meet the parameters that we granted nine out of, you know, nine tenths of the way. What is your thought there?
I believe that our deadline, based on the process, is October. Like, when we, when we do our satellite and expansions, it's, we have to have it all approved before the the following October. So this October 2023, we have to have a decision made one way or another in order for this campus to go forward.
Okay, so if we were in fact to consider this request after going through a traditional, sort of the process again, the administrative process, we may be able to hear this in in August. And Ms. Stephenson, please.
I, I think the question we would have as as staff and and maybe with Deputy Superintendent Stallings here, because we have had other schools asking about satellites and the direction that we've been given is that currently we don't have an approved process since the rule changed and our process has not yet been reapproved by USBE in alignment with the new, with the updates to the rule. And so I think that would be another question to consider or maybe Chair, Vice Chair, if we wanted to, you know, consult with our council because they were approved prior to the rule change. But would they be eligible for us to consider that? Or would they fall into the same space with others? We have a large number that are all waiting to put in expansion and satellite requests and are just waiting on those applications to get written and then turned into USBE and then approved, which staff is working through right now.
May I ask what the timeline is on our process? And I know we, we can't say whether the board will approve it and what their timeline will be for approving that, but for presenting it to the USBE under their new rule for this satellite and and expansion process.
Right now, staff has the small expansion request, procedure, policy and application ready to share with either the authorizing committee first or the full board, depending on the direction that the state charter school board would like to go. And needing some direction and guidance on that. And then pending that outcome and decision, then we would be ready to send it over to USBE for their conversation. I believe the rule allows them 60 days for either an approval or not.
Let me ask another question. In the meantime, and and this would be for Vice Superintendent Stallings as well as our staff, in the meantime, is it administratively correct for us to operate under the the previously approved process until the new process is approved?
Yeah, I, so I, I'm not your legal counsel, so I'm going to defer to Mr. Olson. But it makes sense that, I just wanted to reiterate that the rule does give you up to six months to submit your updated processes based on the new rule to USBE, which I'm likening it to how it works for us at USBE. When the legislature passes a law, it often takes us six months to write an administrative rule. And in that case, sometimes that means the effectiveness of the originating law actually doesn't take effect until a little later, which, again, your counsel could speak to this, but means you could use your existing processes in the meantime until you get the updated processes approved. But again, I don't want, I definitely think you should defer to your own legal counsel.
AAG Olson.
I can't give you counsel on that yet because I, I'm not familiar with this rule. I need to take a look at it. And I would need to speak with Marie as far as what's been done and where, where they're at with it. So I don't have advice or recommendations I can give to you right now.
My gut feeling, and then I'm going to let some members speak, would be that we would probably, to make sure that you get the money that you need if we were to approve this and that you are, that this is not pulled back by the USBE today, if we, if we were to approve it today, would be to ask you to work with our staff to go through the existing process and come back to us in August so that we could consider it again then with kind of these new parameters. And I think, you know, we, we have already approved the broad picture of what you want to do, but probably just need to make sure that we follow the administrative procedures very carefully that the USB set out for us in this process so that you are in a very good position to move forward and that we are able to allow you to do what we've already approved you to do, but within this new look. Members Sisneros, I know that you've been wanting to comment.
It's feedbacks on what you're saying. I just would, I would hope that there's a way to conditionally approve them today pending AAG Olson's review. And then if it comes back where he's worked with staff and done a legal lens and given us counsel that no, then we can bring, always bring him back in August. But if we've conditionally approved it and then his review is no, they're good, then they, we haven't wasted anybody's time.
Can I also say that the timing for us isn't, this isn't like a emergency thing because we were going to grow the ninth through 12th grade organically anyways. So I, I still will have room for the ninth grade in that new building, one way or the other, for a year. So we have time to sort this out.
Okay, so I, I like the idea of at least voicing the board's intent, which we've already voted on in a previous meeting. And and then perhaps maybe including anyone who's inclined to make a motion, maybe including something about approval pending AAG Olson's review and/or the need for additional administrative processes. Because again, even if AAG Olson should come to us and say, this isn't really going to work exactly the way it is, we have also approved that the school enters into the administrative work in the existing process that we can review again in August and and add our approval to at that time. Because I do think that we're, you know, we're inclined to, we want you to go through with the satellite. We, as a board, we voted for that. Their, their snags come up with land, with, this is a very difficult time to acquire land. It's very expensive. If you have an opportunity to, to essentially fulfill our board's will with just a few adjustments, that will be something we're likely to approve. But we do want to make sure that the USBE feels that the process we've gone through has been appropriate. So with that kind of a little bit sort of wandering instruction, do I have someone who might be ready to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a stab at it. And feel free to jump in on language. So I'd like to make a motion to hold on, yeah, by noting my notes here on the back here. Yeah, I would like to make, I would move to approve Wall Stegner Academy's request to amend its charter agreement to change its new satellite into a K eight and adjust its second school into a nine twelve? But barring any, what is that?
On the condition.
On the condition. It's still a K twelve. We don't care that it's a nine twelve. I thought it was.
This is, we have two K eights, one K twelve, but the K twelve has two locations.
Yes, perfect.
Oh, my. Okay.
Um, sorry, the K twelve is split into a nine twelve and a K eight.
That's it. That's what I'm trying to communicate.
I, I think, I think that's. It, within the same.
Members Sisneros, please speak into your mic so I can.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I think if we get too caught up on parcels, we're going to end up in problems, whereas we have to be thinking through school numbers. So a school number one is a K eight, school number two is a K eight, and school number three is a K twelve. If we think of it in parcels, well, we don't care about parcels, right? So if we're saying there's a K eight, a K eight, a K eight, a nine twelve, that's four school numbers. And then that's when I think we would run into rule problems. Whereas if we just say, you've got two K eights and a K twelve, right? Then I don't care if a K eight is on one side and a K, and a nine twelve is on the other side, as long as they're in the district in which we, they said we're going to be in this district's geographic boundary.
The only thing is, though, that the rule and the process may care. We may not care. But when a school is approved through the process that was effective when this school was approved, it did ask for specific things, which we then approved, which have now changed.
Sort of. So let's say, let's say the existing K eight, which has the parcel next to it, is in Granite, and the new K eight is in Granite, then I don't care where they stick their nine twelve kids. Next door to the K eight, in the same building as the K eight, five blocks from the K eight, on the very border of Granites, I, I don't care. They have cars, their parents are dropping them off. So I think we're splitting hairs. But the difference is if we create that four school number, now I think we do have a rule problem. But if we keep it to three school numbers, we don't have a pending our legal representations comments, then we don't have a, we don't have a rule problem. It's the creation of the four school number that creates a process problem.
Well, correct. Yes and no. I mean, the, the reality is that the process under which they were approved asked for specific things. If we change those specific things, have we then gone awry of the process by which we're supposed to follow the approval?
But that's my question. What has changed, other than they're not going to be housed in the same building? But we're not far enough down. That could happen to any school who says, I can't afford the building specs anymore, right? That could happen at, at anybody at any point in time. So that's why I would be inclined to just say, I don't, I just don't even see that this needs an approval.
Did, let me ask staff again. The process under which this satellite was approved, as you think about that process, did it require specifications? Because remember, it's a USBE-approved process. Did it require specifications for approval that would in fact be significantly different from this, that what was being requested today? In other words, there are times when the USB's processes require that a school specify A, B, C, and D relative to what the new expansion or school will look like. I'm not talking about the new process that will be in effect, which does give us a lot of flexibility in the way that we conceive of, of the, of the, of the new satellite or the new expansion. But that does, was the old process so prescriptive that it required specifics on what are now being requested as changes?
I believe, I believe Ms. Stephenson is looking up some stuff. I, I cannot answer that question. I do not remember this, that level of specificity in the process before.
Because if there's not that level of specificity and we approved this satellite under an approved process by the USBE that, that is general enough in its categories, that this is really not a material change, then I think we could approve it today. That's, I think that's the question. And we could actually still, I know we were kind of in the middle of a motion, but you didn't actually fully make it. And so, for a variety of reasons. But if in fact, we're able to approve this today, I think we would like to. But if, we could also make the motion that the approval is, is conditional pending the, the judgment and legal advice of AAG Olson. And then we could inform the school as to what that advice was. Ms. Stephenson, are you ready?
I am ready.
Okay, very good.
Um, the level, excuse me, the level of specificity that was both in their application and is now in their current charter agreement is that the charter school satellite number two, so it is one LEA number for that satellite two, which was granted in 2023, shall be located in either West Valley City or Salt Lake City, within Salt Lake or Granite School districts, which location is material to its authorization.
Board members, any discussion about that? Okay, AAG Jones, would, would you still, would it still be prudent for us? Olson, I'm sorry. I've been so good this whole meeting. Have you noticed that? I, I apologize. We said that for so many years. But would you still advise us to make the motion conditional?
I would recommend that. I think, give me a chance to look at the rule and, and the concern I have is you've got others that are seeking satellite applications. And if this were viewed or construed as, as granting a, another satellite location, that would concern me. About going through the process.
Thank you. And Dr. Evans, did you have your hand up?
I, I did, yes. Only to just kind of say, there were, there was a choice made with a, with Spectrum Academy a few years back. So if you think about it, Spectrum Academy has two campuses a quarter, or two, two LEA numbers, but their North Salt Lake campus, for example, has three separate buildings. And it made, I wasn't here when that changed. That was five, 10 years ago. So I, I don't know what change actually went through for that one. But it reminded me of that situation particularly that, to member Sisneros's point, the actual proximity of the buildings to one another seemed to not have been an issue in that case.
So what we're granting conditionally, if we were to make the motion and it passes, would be to allow the satellite that we've approved to be in two locations. That's all. The previous satellite we, we approved. So we don't need to mention every school in the LEA. We are just looking at the satellite that we approved, the K through 12, that it, that it, that we grant this amendment request that it be in two locations. Or when I say two locations, physical locations, but not necessarily even outside of the same district. Ms. Stephenson?
One other piece of data to add from the school's charter agreement. One other piece of data to add from the school's charter agreement is that in charter agreement, point number seven, their student population, it is just listed out as that they are authorized to serve grades K through seven, and it is listed by location. So their original Salt Lake City campus is authorized for 810 students. Their West Valley City campus, which is satellite number one, 810 students. And then that satellite number two is 1,290 students for an LEA total of 2,910. And so nowhere does it specifically break out K through eight or nine through twelve. So it is done as an LEA total rather than grade-specific as far as their student population.
Okay, so we're looking at the recent satellite that was granted. There were, the amendment request that we have before us is that that satellite that was recently granted, almost a notification, be allowed to be, to serve students at two locations. And that's approval, if we decide to make a motion that approves that, would be conditioned on the approval after review from AAG Olson. That it does not go, that it does not contradict any either procedural administrative rule from our USBE or the process that was current when it was approved. Does that seem about right? Okay, I'm looking for a motion then.
Thanks, everybody, for your patience. I, I think this conversation is very beneficial. So let's try this. I would like to make a motion to allow Wallace Stegner Academy's satellite number two to be in different locations, under the condition from the review from AAG Olson.
So.
Under the.
Condition, yeah.
Conditionally that there are no, barring any conflicts to the current while we, to rule and process. That was a mess.
You could just say conditioned on any legal review. I don't think we need to explain what.
Great.
Some of the.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. Great.
I have a second to that motion?
Yes, I'll second.
Is there any discussion to the motion? All right. Any discussion to the motion over here? Okay, let's go ahead and call for a vote on that motion then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you guys so much. That was a tricky one.
I was hoping for a little bit more like vice chair finesse, you know, in my motions, but I'm going to keep working on it.
We have a, a final agenda item today. Nope, actually, we have, we have two more, excuse me. But we have a final, a final agenda item related to a request for a change in something that was previously granted. And we have a request for a transfer of assignment which pertains to Summit High School and Summit Academies. And Smriti, I'm going to hope to pronounce your last name perfectly, DeKal?
Yes.
Okay. Smriti DeKal will be our presenter today. And she is our financial audit manager and will present about this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So, yeah, I'm here to discuss about the agenda item that is the board considering the approval of the transfer of assignment of Summit Academy High School to Summit Academies, effectively merging the two LEAs. So, and I believe Brad Wilkinson, business manager from the school, I can also see board chair here. And, you know, if you could join us who are here at the table.
Thank you. And, and we'll ask after, you to introduce yourselves after Ms. DeKal's presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, so to give you all some context, so Summit Academy High School and Summit Academies were set, were set up as separate LEAs, but have in practice largely functioned as a single LEA. So the main differences are that the funds and reporting had to be kept separate, so which has caused some unique challenges for the LEAs. So, and at this time, the two LEAs wish to officially merge under the Summit Academies LEA. And they, we, we all believe that doing this will save the combined LEA a significant amount of money and will also be easier for reporting purposes. So this merger will basically be a transfer of assignment as allowed by Summit Academy High School's charter agreement. And we would be transferring the assignment of charter agreement to Summit Academy. And this will mean that Summit High School will close in papers and it will open again under Summit Academies as a new campus. So, and to students and the community, there should be no difference at all in the process. So, and the talk about the merger of Summit Academies and the high school has been going on for a few years now. The Summit Academy team has taken several steps in the process for a successful merger, such as going before the Utah Charter's Finance Authority for financial approval and keeping bonds separate for now for the two LEAs and started working with USBE on finance side, Cactus, et cetera, getting, working with their auditors, legal counsel, et cetera. So Summit Academies High School and Summit Academies both have bonded their buildings, but only Summit Academies is credit enhanced. So this has, this created some challenges, but the LEAs have worked through these challenges and received the support of the Utah Charter School Finance Authority to merge. So at least for the time being, the bonds will be kept separate and there seems to be no issue with Summit Academies having two bonds. So the school also gave an official 90-day notice to its bondholders. And it is our understanding that the bondholders cannot veto the merger or make any changes to any decision of the LEAs and the SCSP. Summit Academies will continue keeping separate financial statements for bondholders as necessary until the 90 days' notice requirements are met. And the finance piece will merge starting July 1st, 2023. But from logistical standpoint, everything won't be official until September 1st of this year. So after the 90-day notice period to the bondholders is over. So, and also USB finance operations staff support the consolidation of the two LEAs effective July 1st, 2023. And they also provided us with a letter saying that after careful review and consideration of the proposed consolidation, USB staff have determined that the consolidation is in the best interest of students, teachers, and administrators, and that they see the potential for reduced operational cost by consolidating the two schools.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. That's very thorough. Would representatives from the combined Summit High School and Summit Academies introduce yourselves? And we would, we would love to hear from you about how this will help your, your new LEA.
I'm Angela Grimmer. I am the principal at the high school.
And I'm Brad Wilkinson, business administrator, and I do that for, at this moment, for both LEAs.
And my name is Johnny Born. I'm the board chair for both Summit Academy and Summit Academy High School.
What I'm going to do is open up this time for board members who may have questions related to your thought process, whether, you know, how involved stakeholders have been and other things as we consider granting and approving this request. Board members, do you have questions of either Ms. DeKal or the representatives from Summit Academies? Okay. It, it, it sort of seems to make sense to us. You know, this is a wonderful way of having economies of scale, which many small charters long for. And you guys have the opportunity to, to do this. There, there were some sticky things to work out. It sounds like, you know, we wondered about that too, as we sort of heard rumor of this, particularly with your bondholders. It sounds like that has worked out well. Is there anything you would like us to know in addition before we maybe consider a motion?
Just that staff has been incredibly helpful in this process. We've, from, I think, maybe a year and a half ago, when they visited a board meeting and worked with us on it. This, it's, it's complicated. It's not something we've all gone through before. And I just want to recognize that staff's been very, very helpful. And also our team here is just A-plus, so.
Thank you. These, these financial things, we have a wonderful department that, here in our staff, that understands some of these things that the rest of us don't. So we appreciate all the work that, that this has taken. And, and especially if it sets a, some of our charters on a path of financial stability and being able to serve students well, we really applaud that. So board members, since there don't seem to be any questions at this time, I wonder if I could ask for a motion? Yes, please.
I'm sorry, can I just ask, before I plan to read the motion that's printed on the paper that Ms. DeKal gratefully has put together for us? Can, can I just ask?
Please.
Is there any change that you would suggest to the possible motion that's been drafted for us? Or is that all right online?
I think this captures everything that we're, yeah, we are hoping to get. So, yeah, that should be good. Thank you.
Amber Olson then, please.
May I? Thanks, Vice Chair. Appreciate that.
May I just make a comment? I believe the, I mean, as we're talking about transfer of assignment, I think of the intent is to, is to give consent to the assignment between the two schools to assign the charter agreement, is what I have understood.
Is, is one giving consent to another?
No, well, there, you have one that's assigning the charter agreement to the other one, the rights and responsibilities under it. And you just need to give your consent to that assignment.
And I think that that is the way the motion has been written. Member Olson?
Well, I, I assume so, in that it's drafted to approve the new charter agreement. Does that comprise then? Does that encompass that assignment or?
Well, they, as I understand it, they would be assigning the charter agreement that the current school has, the current charter agreement.
I, I think you're looking, there, there's two parts to the.
That's right. I was looking at the second part. So the first part, do you, do you think that covers it or?
Well, there's not a new charter agreement. That's where the point I'm trying to make is you've got a charter agreement between you and the high school, if I have that correct. And the high school is, is assigning its rights under that agreement to the Summit Academy.
So the only part that's necessary is the first part of the motion that's been drafted?
Yeah, there hasn't been a new agreement proposed, as I understand.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Stephenson.
We do have a, a drafted, that is listed as the Exhibit A on your documents there. And then that would be attached with the legal portion that we typically do for the, for the charter agreement. The Exhibit A there lists what that would look like, bringing both the current Summit Academies and Summit Academy High School together. So that is what their personalized section would look like.
So is that because when there's that transfer, we essentially have a new entity with which we're chartering?
Yeah, so that would be an updated charter agreement. That was our understanding.
Well, it'd be an amended charter agreement. If you're creating a new one, I mean, that's going to be the same thing. I mean, you could approve it as a new one, but but technically, you're, you're assigning, you're allowing, you're consenting to the assignment of the charter agreement to the second school. And if, and if you've allowed that Exhibit A to that agreement to be amended, then you'd be approving that amendment.
Okay, so in other words, in the process of, of transferring the assignment of Summit High School to Summit Academies, we are also contemplating a new Exhibit A for the, for Summit Academies because of the new high school within it. Is that what's happening?
The, the training that we got from staff on this was that because we have a fairly old charter, in order to bring that charter up to speed and, you know, effectuate the merger, we do currently have two agreements. And so while this merger is a process, the first step in that process is the assignment of one agreement, so that the academies currently holds all the responsibilities for that. But in the process of going through that, the, we have the option to either do an amended charter that would encompass, encapsulate everything that now the high school would bring to the table in that original charter agreement or file an Amendment A, or Exhibit A, excuse me, and bring the charter up to speed that way, which is what we did.
Right. And usually, when there's just an Exhibit A that's being updated, we put it on consent. But because this big transfer was happening too, it, it would appear that our staff also wanted us, in the context of that, to consider this updated Exhibit A. So I, I think, would it be, Ms. Stephenson, would it be appropriate to amend this, the, the motion that's been drafted for our consideration to say, I also move to approve the new Exhibit A for Summit Academies?
So this has been a, a piece that we've been discussing as staff, that the charter agreement would be the correct language and that the charter agreement consists of the legal portion that is boilerplate, essentially where we just fill in dates. And that is what, after approval, then our board chair signs and the school's board signs after it's approved. And then the Exhibit A is the personalized section that staff works on closely with the school. And so together, those two portions make a charter agreement. And so typically, when we've looked at it with our board, we've typically only reviewed the Exhibit A because the legal portion has been reviewed previously by AAG Jones at that point. It was Jones at that point. It has not yet been reviewed by AAG Olson, but we would love that. And if, you know, we need to make changes to that, we certainly could at a future date. But where that is standard language in all current charters, that just gets added on at the end.
So it would appear that this transfer necessitated a significant updating in this regard of the charter, and so that it is as though it were a new agreement here.
Yes, and we have worked closely with the school on that and their governance committee. And I know Board Member Sisneros was asking about if this has gone to the authorizing committee, as is our typical process. And it has not. Our, our leadership of our team had advised us to just have it come on our agenda item, since we were discussing all of these other pieces, rather than having it go separately through committee and reviewing there that we could take care of it here with the merger request as well. Of course, if you would prefer, we could put it on to the authorizing committee for our next meeting and then put it on to consent and follow that typical process. But where we had Summit Academy and Summit Academy High School coming in to chat with us, and we thought that if you wanted to review that here today, that was an option as well.
Board members, do you have comments now that we kind of understand the situation better? And I would especially defer to members of the authorizing and amending committee if they felt that they needed to see this in more detail, if they wanted to ask staff more specifically about staff's recommendation on it, or however you wanted to proceed there. I think at the very least, we could consider the transfer of assignment today. But if you felt, those of you particularly on the committee could advise the rest of us who are on other committees, whether or not you felt comfortable moving ahead with the second part of the motion.
As a member of the authorizing committee, I, I don't see a need for us to reconvene on this. I mean, are, are we comfortable then, Ms. Stephenson, Ms. DeKal? You're recommending that we move forward with all of these changes?
Can I speak to that first? I would say that we are most likely comfortable with that. As the Chair of Summit Academy and Summit Academy High Schools had mentioned, Mr. Eborn, that we have been working on this for a few years. And so I did go back through our notes and the authorizing committee has reviewed it previously. I believe that was before there was our change in board leadership. And so back when Chair Bowles was on the authorizing committee and we had some different membership there. And as we were picking this process back up, another board member from Summit, Ms. Welch, she and I went back through and made sure where was the last place that we had notes from the authorizing committee. We reviewed all of those, made sure that everything had been met. So feedback from the committee had been given to Summit two different times. And everything that had been given had been incorporated into the draft that you, or the proposed version that you are currently seeing. And so I would feel comfortable recommending that per the prior authorizing committee's recommendations. But of course, if you would like to see that up closer, always happy to bring it back for a third review.
Unless Ms. Bassett has concerns, I'm, I'm inclined to go ahead and just make a motion. Let's see if we can get this all approved.
Thank you, Member Olson.
I, I would move, I, I move to approve the transfers of, the transfer of, of assignment. Let me start over. Need more lawyers in the room. Let me start over. Need more lawyers in the room. I move to approve the transfer of assignment of Summit High School to Summit Academies, starting July one, twenty twenty-three, if both LEAs have completed all the steps needed to occur before the entities merge on July one, twenty twenty-three. I also move to approve the new charter agreement for Summit Academies, which comprises or includes the updated Exhibit A, and among other things, includes the addition of a high school campus, beginning for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Members, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
So we have a motion for Member Olson and a second for Member Basset. Do I have any discussion to this motion? Okay, I'd like to call for a vote on this motion then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Congratulations. We're excited for your new era. Yes, thank you so much, Ms. DeKal, and then for the explanations as well on the charter agreement to Ms. Stephenson.
Thank you, everyone.
And now we have a really, really fun little kind of ending to our agenda. Dr. Evans is going to spotlight some schools for us, as, as is his role as the school performance coordinator. And we are excited to, to hear about these schools. This is one of the highlights of being on the board, to hear about these wonderful charters.
This is one of the highlights of being on the board and getting to work here. So every year, the board will remember that we have a statutory obligation to review all charter schools every five years. And so what we've done is we've set up a cycle where there's about twenty-five schools every year that we go through, and that's the, the batch. This year, our selection of twenty-five had a really big spread. We had some schools that were as young as five years, and we had a few schools that were in their twenties. So this was, this was a really great group of schools to look at. As we've completed the comprehensive reviews, one of the things that we've done with the LEAs is communicate with them about ways that we can update their language to make sure that their charter agreements are accurate and really reflective of the good things that they're doing. Just as an example, there was one charter school that had almost twenty-seven key elements, just because when, when we wrote those charter agreements twenty years ago, that's what we wanted to see. And things have evolved a little bit, and we no longer want to see twenty-seven key elements. We're working on that with, with our schools. Now, we have, a lot of our schools are doing really, really great things based on their comprehensive review, but we realized that we couldn't, budget-wise, we couldn't invite all twenty-five schools to come to a celebration. So we decided we needed to narrow it down. And so what we did is we looked at the annual reviews and the annual review metrics. That includes metrics in both finances, enrollment, and academics. And we, based on, based on the past CSAF that's been established, there were schools that were high-performing, meeting standards, not meeting standards, and then falling far below. So what we did is we looked at the schools that had met or exceeded in all metrics in their annual reviews for the last, at least the last year. And we came up with eight schools. So a huge congratulations to Carl G. Mazer Academy, Ames, the Academy for Math Engineering and Science, the Center for Creativity, Innovation, and Discovery, Timpanogus Academy, Highmark Charter School, Thomas Edison Charter Schools, Canyon Rim Academy, and Promontory School of Expeditionary Learning. Those schools, besides just having a good comp review this year, also had received either meets standards or exceeds in every single annual review metric. So that's why they were chosen for the celebration. So they're gonna all be joining us here at the baseball game in an hour and a half. And we're just glad we get to do this every year with our schools. And it's, the rain is supposed to stop. I know we've been in here for a while, but I've been watching it. The rain is supposed to stop, so we should still be good to go. And we just look forward to seeing everybody there.
Much, Dr. Evans. What a great, what a great time of year for us to meet with some schools that have just exceeded, you know, all of our expectations. And they're such different schools from each other. That's what's fun, too, to look at the names. And I've visited most of these schools before, and they are very unique, each one. So thank you so much for highlighting those. I am looking for one last motion. Oh, never mind. I am looking for a comment from Member Spiker.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the board and to the staff for organizing the opportunity for us to attend graduations. Looking at the list, I went to the Promatory, I went to Promatory to their eighth grade passage ceremony, cried for an hour, refilled my cup a little bit, and just, it was, I just want to say thank you for helping facilitate that. I think, as we were talking earlier and have just over the, my time in the board, we're trying so hard to build relationships. And I was welcomed with open arms. They were so excited that I came and, and spent time, and I was just humbled to be in the space. And I, really, it was just so fulfilling for me to be there in the presence of seeing and hearing outcomes through the, through the mouths of students. And I'm sure many of you had similar experiences attending that graduation week of just wonderfulness. And it was just, again, I think this is a, I'm excited to see these schools. Thank you for putting this out there. I think often the celebration gets lost in, sometimes in a lot of the, it's the policy work and the, and the legal work, which is just as important. The celebration is equally important. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Okay, I gotta join on that. I went to Mana Academy. And this is unbelievable. So the, the data is that Polynesian traditional Highlander, Hawaiian Islands, and Indigenous Native Americans have the lowest engagement rate in our secondary schools. So to have a school that had ten students graduate, out of ten students, that's important data. But what's more important is all ten are going to post-secondary. But what is even more important is the Larry H. Miller and Gail, Larry H. and Gail Miller Foundation gives fifteen scholarships annually. Mana Academy had two of their recipients. And I, they not only welcomed me, but Anna Posse, who I've known for a long time, actually had me in the program. So I was really glad that I showed up, because that would have been horrible if I hadn't. I wouldn't have missed it, but it was just so fantastic to celebrate with them and, and see their accomplishments. So great job to Mana and those students.
Thank you so much. And I, I think that, I'm sad that Chair Bowles isn't here, because I think that he would have liked to probably highlight that if he had remembered in his board chair, you know, little review that he did. But I wanted to say, too, this, this will have been about the fifth time that I've attended the graduation at Uwinter, Uwinter River in Vernal, and among other great highlights. And they have a huge number of Native American students graduate each year. They do their processional and recessional with a full-on Native American drum performance that includes traditional singing. And it, often the audience joins in. And it is really, really moving. But I think I heard, I want to say either from Ms. Casio or someone in our staff, I, I hope that we were able to, as a staff and board, attend, if not every one of the ceremonies we were invited to, almost every one this year. Is that right, guys? I mean, that needs to be, that needs to be our bar. We need to always be able to do that. So, anyway, congratulations, and thanks to you all for putting that time. And I know we all went to many, and that there wasn't one that we didn't love. I went, I got to go to Itineris, actually, right here with our own member Sisneros there. It was fantastic. It was fantastic. I, I've never gone to one that I've regretted. I have always loved them. Yeah, they did, they did. It was great. If my knees were better, I'd have joined in. But anyway, so thank you for doing that. That's a big effort. And staff, that's a lot of, a lot of time for you to put in, sometimes after hours, you know, and we know that, because we're doing some of that as well. So thank you so much. That was, I, I know that means a lot to our schools. It, it absolutely does. So thank you for that effort, and I hope that we can keep that up. It's, it's one of the best things, I think, that we do as a board, and join in with, with our staff in fulfilling that privilege, not really an obligation. So, looking for one last motion.
I move that we adjourn.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.